Welcome to Monday meets meeting. Uh, roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Meyer?
Present.
Commissioner Benson?
Present.
Commissioner Freitas? Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
And Commissioner Lazar?
Here.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Kraft, do you want to s- salute to the flag?
I will do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the April tenth meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, to approve the regular planning commission meeting minutes of April tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you.
I didn't see anything noteworthy of discussion on those meetings, on those minutes for myself.
They look good.
We could probably just call out a vote for that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And we'll move on to oral commissions and, uh, communications, sorry. This is for anything that is not on our agenda item. So if there is anyone in the Zoom waiting room that would like to speak on something that is not on our agenda, now would be your time. Thank you. We will close oral communications and open, uh, our new public hearing. Morton and Cattlemen Vacation Rental. Cattlemen, sorry if I butchered that.
Um, Assistant Planner Melissa Smith will be giving the presentation. Yeah, I was checking if it works. Okay, super. Thanks, Commissioners. This item is a hearing on a minor use permit for a proposed vacation rental with no proprietor on site at three five three nine J Street. Here is the project site in context of the city limits. Zooming in, the site is located south of Harris Street, west of Sequoia Park Zoo. Zooming in further, three five three nine J Street includes two interior parcels totaling nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty-six square feet at the narrow dead end portion of a portion of J Street between Manzanita Avenue to the north and Madrone Avenue to the south, east of I Street, adjoining a gulch greenway of Martin Slough in the R one residential low zoned it, zone district. The two parcels contain an existing two-story, one thousand four hundred and thirty-four square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family residence with an attached four hundred and sixty-two square foot, two-car garage. The applicants proposed to rent the entire property as one vacation rental. There will be no proprietor on site during rentals. Summary of the project, per Eureka Municipal Code, a minor use permit is needed for a no proprietor on-site vacation rental in the R one zoning district. The Eureka Municipal Code would allow a total of eight guests, not including children age twelve and under, two persons per bedroom plus two additional persons. A designated emergency contact is located in Arcata less than fifty, uh, less than the fifty-mile requirement, and the emergency contact's information will be provided to all properties within two hundred feet of the rental, as well as the Eureka Police Department upon approval of the vacation rental. At the time of the staff report, there were three onsite parking spaces, two in the garage and one in the driveway. Per the applicant, house rules include no parties or events and quiet hours between ten PM and eight AM. And just please note that changes to guest occupancy maximums and onsite parking will be discussed on a later slide. Uh, history of the project, the applicant applied on September first of twenty twenty-two. The applicant's submitted materials indicated there will be four off-street parking spaces, two in the driveway and two in the garage. In a conversation on September seventh and confirmed in an email September eighth, the applicant stated only two off-street parking spaces would be provided in the driveway, none in the garage, and guests would be limited to only four-wheel-drive vehicles because of the steep grade of the driveway. At the time, it was unclear where the property lines were and whether the driveway was on the subject property or neighboring property. Without clarity on the location of the property lines, staff could not determine if vacation rental guests would need to enter the neighbor's property to access the vacation rental and to park their vehicles in the driveway. Without a lay-in survey, the applicant was informed the only way staff could recommend approval would be if conditions of approval were added, requiring guests be limited to one vehicle total, and they must enter the vacation rental through the side or rear of the residence. Entering through the garage or front door could not be permitted without a survey confirming the location of the property lines. As a possible solution to help ensure legal access, it was suggested to the applicant a walkway on their property from the side of the house to the roadway could be installed. The applicant built a walkway but opposed the proposed guest access from the side or rear of the house and the vehicle limitations, and thus elected to put the application on hold until a survey prepared by licensed surveyor could be conducted. That was on November seventh of twenty twenty-two. Um, it's important to note the applicant indicated onsite, on-street parking is adequate in this area, but it was determined by staff this portion of J Street is a narrow right-of-way. At its smallest, it's sixteen feet across. At its widest, it's fifty-one feet across, and some of the areas considered on-street parking are actually private property. On March tenth, twenty twenty-three, the applicant provided a map, a survey map, signed and stamped by a licensed surveyor, which indicated the driveway is on the subject property. A portion of the front steps are on the neighboring property, and the newly-built walkway and wooden fenced trash enclosure built by the applicant were accidentally constructed in an undeveloped portion of the public right-of-way. With clarity on the location of property lines and confirmation the driveway and garage entrance are located on the subject property, staff was able to proceed with processing the application. On March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, the applicant confirmed in an email that guests would be allowed to use both the driveway and the garage for parking, and no restrictions would be imposed regarding four-wheel-drive vehicles, but guests would be informed to use discretion using the garage during severe rainstorms just to be safe. With consideration of the city's parking space dimension standards, the staff report stated three off-street parking spaces would be provided to guests. At the time the staff report, staff was recommending approval of the minor use permit with conditions requiring the three off-street parking spaces remain available to vacation res- rental guests for the duration of the rental and requiring guests access the dwelling unit through the garage or rear of the property to avoid guests crossing over the neighboring property to the north to access the rental from the front door. On April sixth, twenty twenty-three, a notice of pending action was sent to all neighboring properties within three hundred feet of the subject property posted on the city's website and at City Hall, which stated the director's action to approve the minor use permit would become final if no request for public hearing with the planning commission was received on or before April twenty-fourth. On April nineteenth, a request for public hearing was received, and on April twenty-eighth, a public hearing notice was subsequently mailed to all neighboring property owners within three hundred feet, posted on the city's website and at City Hall. Concerns expressed in public comment which are addressed in the staff report include that no proprietor will be on site, the effect of short-term rentals on the existing neighborhood, the frequency of vacation rentals in the area, the need for long-term housing and the effect short-term rentals have on the housing stock, and an increase in traffic and noise. However, there are two concerns received which were not addressed in the staff report. First, a neighbor commented that the quality of onsite parking is insufficient, noting the driveway is steep, the garage contents would not allow for two vehicles to be parked inside of it, and that the applicants do not park in the garage or driveway themselves. Additionally, this person stated the applicant and their guests often park at the top of the driveway, blocking the neighbor's gate and/or the public right-of-way. It's important to note the gate being blocked, as shown by the submitted survey map, was partially built in the public right-of-way, and vehicles must cross over a portion of the applicant's property in order to enter the neighboring property through the gate. This gate is not the only access point to the neighboring property. The primary vehicular access for this neighbor is from the improved alley to the west. Additionally, a sixteen-foot by sixty-foot unvacated portion of the J Street right-of-way is located behind this gate and is not accessible to the public. This neighbor also commented that the garbage enclosure and previously mentioned walkway were built in the public right-of-way. So both the applicants and the neighbor providing public comment have structures built within the public right-of-way. The original conditions of approval included the standard vacation rental conditions requiring a building inspection, the payment of transient occupancy tax, and mech- maximum occupancy limits. Two additional project-specific conditions were also included, requiring the three off-street parking spaces, two in the attached garage and one in the driveway, must remain available to vacation rental guests for the duration of vacation rental operation. As a portion of the front steps are located on the neighboring property to the west, all vacation rental guests are required to enter the dwelling unit through the garage or rear of the residence to avoid crossing over the property, property line while accessing the vacation rental. The applicants are required to relay this information to vacation rental guests prior to arrival. The self-imposed house rules included no events and quiet hours from ten PM to eight AM were not added as conditions of approval as it was assumed the applicants would elect to convey their own rules to vacation rental guests. Staff is recommending two additional conditions of approval which are not included in the staff report and draft resolution. The first is to inform all vacation rental guests in writing that vehicles may not block the neighbor's gate or the roadway, and to enter into a hold harmless agreement with Public Works Engineering for the walkway and trash enclosure in the public right-of-way. Um, it is important to note, it is important to note, shortly before noon today, comments were received from Tracy Cattelman, one of the applicants, objecting to the condition requiring the three off-street parking spaces and clarifying the applicant's plan to limit the rental to six guests rather than the eight allowed by our municipal code. After speaking with Tracy this afternoon, staff has altered two of the original recommended conditions of approval to limit the rental to six adult guests and only require two off-street parking spaces. Staff believes the reduced number of allowed guests warrants the reduction in required parking. The applicant's letter also objects to the recommended condition that requires guests to enter through their garage or the back deck, and staff continues to recommend this condition. As far as the enforcement of the vacation rental standards, a designated twenty-four, twenty-four-hour emergency contact is located in Arcata, which again meets the required fifty-mile maximum, and as mentioned earlier, their contact information will be provided to all neighboring properties within two hundred feet of the vacation rental and to the Eureka Police Department upon approval of the vacation rental permit. Should the city receive two or more notifications within a rolling twelve-month period showing the applicant, property owner, or emergency contact has been negligent, negligent in responding to an emergency situation, or there are documented law or law enforcement violations, or the vacation rental is chronically non-compliant with the requirements of the vacation rental subsection in the Eureka Municipal Code, or one or more conditions of approval have not been complied with or fulfilled, or the applicant fails to pay the required transient occupancy tax, or fails to correct any building or fire code violations, the vacation rental minor use permit may be revoked. Because the pla- because the public hearing was requested, the planning commission is now taking action on the minor use permit to approve the use permit. The planning commission must find the proposed use is consistent with the general plan and the zoning code. The project site is suitable for the use. The use is compatible with the existing and planned uses in the vicinity. The use will not be detrimental to, to public health, safety, and welfare, and the use is properly located within the city and adequately served by public infrastructure and services. As discussed in the staff report, staff believes the findings can be made and recommends the planning commission hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from CEQA, conditionally approving the minor use permit for a vacation rental at three five three nine J Street, altering two conditions and adding two conditions as follows. Alter condition B to require two off-street parking spaces, one in the garage, one in the driveway. Alter condition E requiring the maximum number of occupants, not including children twelve and under, not exceed six. Add a condition requiring the applicant to inform guests in writing they may not block the neighboring gate or roadway, and add a condition, the applicant must enter into a hold harmless agreement with the city of Eureka for the walkway and trash enclosure. The suggested motion reads, I move the planning commission adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from CEQA and conditionally approving the minor use permit for a vacation rental at three five three nine J Street with the changes to the conditions of approval recommended by staff at the hearing. I'll stop screen sharing to allow for discussion. Staff is available for questions, and the applicants are available via Zoom as well.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to Commissioners for questions for staff.
I usually go first, so I was waiting to give others a chance, but it's no one going, I guess I'll go. So I, here's my question for staff. Um, you know, other than the hold harmless, um, agreement, what's the long-term plan for buildings, uh, for structures in the right-of-way? Are we, is the city just planning on continuing to allow that, or is there going to be some corrective action at some point?
I, I mean, I can say what was suggested, yeah. When, in a conversation with the Public Works Department, it was suggested that possibly one solution could be vacating that portion of J Street, which would alleviate both the, um, encroachment of both property owners into the right-of-way. Um, but that's just one possible solution.
That was one staff person at Public Works, and then we spoke with Scott Elsmore, Tra- Traffic Transportation Project Manager, and he said, no, because it's so close to the gulch, they want to hold on to the right-of-way in case we need, uh, the city needs it for public access, you know, if a trail goes through there. So really, the plan is to kind of leave it as is, and then if they do want to use it in the future, they would have to remove those improvements out of the right-of-way.
Is there any strong opposition from the neighbors around that, some of that right-of-way being taken up by structures? Is that going to be something we're going to hear about later?
One, one of the public comments received was in relation to the fact that that walkway and part of the fence was built within the public right-of-way.
Uh, the reason why Public Works was okay with it being there is that portion of right-of-way is so undeveloped and underutilized that that's why he was okay with those structures being in there.
With it being undeveloped and underutilized, the solution was a hold harmless agreement.
Um, my other main question is just a little bit about the math. Um, you know, one, in your slides, one of the concerns, um, you know, was, was, um, you know, available, you're balancing the needs, you know, around policy, um, five-point-one balancing the needs for, for residential housing and, and vacation or non-residential housing. Um, and one of the, one of your notes was that there are twelve thousand and eighty-nine housing units um, in, in the city of Eureka. And is that just, I just want to get a clarification on that number. Is that all the houses in Eureka, whether they're for rent or owned privately? It's just the number of houses? So that one point five percent being vacation rent rentals is based, uh, is, is being applied to all the housing in Eureka? That's non-apartment housing, that's residential? Okay.
Yes, yes. Yeah, it comes from the American Community Survey, and I think it's just, um, overall, it's the overall number of housing units in the city.
Okay. I just wanted to have more context for what one point five percent of that meant. Yeah, okay.
And it's the five-year average, so that's an estimate.
Understood. Those are my immediate questions.
I have a follow-up question to that and then a different question. Um, Commissioner Benson said non-apartment units. Is that accurate, or is that all housing units?
No, I believe it's all housing units.
And my, my question is, uh, so we seem to have, uh, a little butting heads between staff and the applicant on the access through the front door. What is, uh, staff's rationale for requiring going through the other way if in fact we're talking about a few inches on the, on the steps?
When I measured the survey map using the appropriate scale, the walkway is just over three feet wide, and at the top portion of the steps, one foot of that is on the neighboring property. So the vacation rental guests would have approximately two or just over two feet in order to walk down that walkway without pro- crossing over the property line. With the history, um, between the two neighbors, we thought that, um, not allowing guests to cross over vacation rental, uh, the property lines would be ideal, and also because it's a commercial use, we'd be permitting a commercial use who couldn't allow guests to cross over neighboring property lines. So although it seems very minuscule, it is about a foot, and the walkway is only two feet wide on their property at the top.
I appreciate it.
Um, I saw, I, there was a link in the letter from the applicant, and it, uh, showed the vacation rental listing, and it looked like someone had stayed there in March. Is that our understanding is the, uh, currently available for use?
My, what the applicant expressed in their letter and what they've expressed to me, um, over the phone is that they've been utilizing Airbnb to rent it as a long-term rental, so for greater than thirty days.
What's the minimum width of the, of a parking space that you're determining the space available?
Eight and a half feet.
I did have a question about that. Is there a standard for the number of spaces per bedroom?
No, we do not have a parking requirement for vacation rentals.
Cause it seems like going with two spaces for six people means you got three per car, which is, you know, if everybody's carpooling, that's great, but I could see that being a little bit risky. What about, um, making the a condition citing that they can't, if there's complaints about more than two vehicles appearing, you know, that that's the grounds for, you know, violation of the permit and revocation? Just because that's going to be easier for a neighbor to observe than how many people are actually staying there, I think.
Yeah, the planning commission can elect to add or alter conditions. We had, when the applicant originally applied, that was one condition we had expressed to them, um, because we didn't know the location of the property lines. We had said that they would be limited to one vehicle regardless of where it was parked. So that is an option that could be explored.
Another technical question, are, are, are these minor use permits kind of a one-and-done in terms of coming to the planning commission? Are they reviewed at, at any interval of time, like three years or five years for, for being re-permitted, you know, given um, how dynamic our community needs are around housing?
Um, they are not revisited.
Okay, so this is important, yeah, okay.
But if I may add, if the permit was up for revocation, it would come back before you at a public hearing.
Thank you.
There is a provision that the vacation rental permit expires if they don't keep, um, their business license active. But thinking that through, the minor use permit would still run with the land, so they would just have to come back in for another building, I mean, business license, and then they could get another VR, although they'd have to submit an application for it. So that is something we could explore in the next zoning code update if you're interested in that.
But we're making a decision tonight what in, that, that this minor use permit will be in effect, and this will be a vacation rental, uh, option in perpetuity?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And so, uh, just for transparency and full disclosure, I live within three hundred feet of this, um, house. Um, but my house doesn't face J Street, but I just am familiar with the area. So there aren't any sidewalks there, so pretty much people just park basically like adjacent to their lot, which is probably on their property. And I'm just curious, do you know if the other rental that's two houses down has had any complaints about parking issues with their guests?
I do not know.
Oh, you don't know if it's permitted either?
I know, I know that it is permitted. I did check that today.
The one on the corner is right on J and Madrone, but there's one on J Street on the court there.
Well, the one on J Street in this, in this dead-end portion of J Street and the one on Madrone are both active permits. And I do not know whether or not they've received any complaints.
Okay, yeah, I'm, parking's really kind of confusing there for a lot of people, and it does get a little bit, and it's really narrow in that one section. So I can see that, that could become a real issue for the neighboring properties if people aren't, which people don't read generally as we know. So there might be a condition for parking, but I can see that it could be a real issue for the neighbors, um, if people are just parking there. Um, but I did wonder if there had been other complaints, so that would be good to know. Any other questions for staff? Okay, well, we'll open a public hearing at this time. A reminder that you have three minutes, which is kind of be a little confusing. I may be on Zoom, so we'll give you a heads up as you press against your time. Um, you can use the hand raise button if you'd like to speak, and generally, if the applicant is here, we give them, um, a first chance to make comment.
Um, the applicant is here, Tracy. Would you like to comment first?
Thank you. Actually, my husband will start. Lance, go ahead and unmute. And then I'm happy to answer questions. I did put something in the chat too, that that trash enclosure does not belong to us. That was our neighbors.
Thank you for that clarification.
Maxwell? Is that your husband, Tracy? Oh, Lance, okay. I don't see, oh, there we go.
Here, and, um, mission members. Uh, good evening. My name is Lance Morton, along with my wife, Tracy. Uh, Cattlemen, we have submitted the request for a minor use permit to share our Eureka home at thirty-five thirty-nine J Street with visitors as a short-term Airbnb rental. I purchased this house and made it my home in two thousand and two. Uh, it was a bank repo then, um, and it was in poor condition. Uh, I spent a year remodeling the interior of the house. Um, I came to Humboldt, uh, because I was appointed as the county's mental health director, and I have, uh, since retired. My wife and I moved to Woodland in two thousand and nineteen when she was recruited to lead a statewide, um, fire organization. Before we moved, I was active in the community as the co-chair of the Human Rights Commission, um, the co-chair of the Mental Health Board, uh, and was on the board of directors of the Humboldt Boys and Girls Club. We think our Eureka home would be a perfect short-term rental, uh, to give visitors a true Redwood Coast experience. When we were in, uh, Eureka last summer, several people commented to us that our home is perfect for sharing the Redwood experience with visitors uh, as it's clearly a home, not a guest house, and our backyard, if anybody has seen it, is truly magical. By the way, there's no pathway, um, in the gulch. Uh, I've traversed it once, um, and I'd never do that again. Uh, it's heavily overgrown, um, so there's no pathway. Um, and I'd never do that again. Uh, it's heavily overgrown, um, so there's no pathway. The following is our, uh, our feedback regarding our permit, which we are respectfully requesting you change as part of our permit approval. We want our guests to enter the house using the front door, using the smart lock, so short term, short term renters only have access during their rental. It would be a significant hardship to change both our exterior and interior garage doors to provide secure access with codes, not to mention it would be unfriendly and in friendly way to enter a vacation round rental, given that the lands survey um, does show that we have legal access through our driveway and front entryway. If necessary, we will paint a line over the few inches on the steps that are on our neighbor's uh, property. Although we are able to provide three off uh, street parking spaces, we do not anticipate this being needed, especially since we rarely expect to rent to more than four adults, occasionally six. Our survey does show that there's plenty of on uh, street parking on the east side of J Street near our new pathway. We are offering three bedrooms for a maximum of six adults. Given my heart condition, I was referred to UC Davis Medical Center where I continue to receive care from a heart surgeon recommended by Dr. Lemon at St. Joe's. Tracy and I still think of Eureka as our home. Approving our permit will allow us to pay for our mortgage while being able to stay there monthly. We appreciate the efforts of the Eureka staff in support of our permit. We will be vigilant in the proper use of our home where we intend to live in between Airbnb reservations.
Thank you. Mr. Morton, you've reached your time limit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And there are two applicants, so I would assume if Tracy, if you, yeah.
Hi, thanks. Um, yeah, a couple of things I wanted to add to what Lance had to say. One is that when we made the decision to do this, we struggled with being part of the housing problem in Eureka because we are both really active community members. I'm part of the, I'm a member of the Humboldt Cert. I've been part of Humboldt Coad, um, I've Eureka is our home, Humboldt's our home. We care about Humboldt a lot. We're down here in Woodland because Lance mentioned his health issues and my work, I work on state and national fire issues. But we want to be back in Humboldt a lot more. Um, hopefully you're not getting that feedback. And so what we decided is if we do a short term rental, that would allow us to be in Eureka, we're hoping at least third time, a third of the time, so that we could come in between. We've been renting it right now, that thirty days or more. So we were up there for two months in July and August. We rented to somebody right after we left in September. We were able to come back for about a week and over Thanksgiving. Rented to another person and these are all great renters. I'm really careful about who I rent to because it's our home. It's got all of our personal stuff in it. And then some, then we were, Lance and I were both back up there in March and April and now we have a renter now, but we're hoping to be up there a lot more in the summer. Um, so it really is important for us to be able to be back in Eureka and back in Humboldt. That's number one. Number two, that trash enclosure is not ours. It belonged to Irene Gilted, our neighbor. Um, I think that address is three five nine nine J, so that does not belong to us. The only reason the walkway is there be, is because planning staff asked us to put it in. So um, those are not, we can't really vacate those. Um, and anything, oh, and the, the photos were interesting. One photo of the garage showed it when we were in the middle of moving stuff in and out, so it obviously looked really crowded. And the other is a truck that was a service vendor. So the only time we have anybody park there is if somebody's coming up and it usually be like a plumber or the firewood or something, they pull up to the gate to unload and then we ask them to move it unless they've got a bunch of stuff and they have to unload and then they move their vehicle, but we do not park in front of that gate and we told anybody who stayed at the house that they can't do that, so we respect that. Um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it looks like we have, uh, Maxwell has his hand up to speak.
Thank you. Is it okay for me to go now?
Yes.
Fantastic. Hi, I'm uh, Dr. Maxwell Schner and I'm the Chair of the Communication Department at Cal Poly Humboldt. And I'm appreciative for the time to get to chat about this with y'all this evening. Um, we're gonna ask that the planning commission not approve uh, this request. Um, and um, we sent a letter, both myself and my partner sent a letter on April twenty-one that we'd like to be in the record if possible. It looks like some of those issues made it into the staff report. But I really want to emphasize um, three crucial things. Um, the first is, is that we think that a short term rental is gonna be really negative for our particular neighborhood. We've lived here for seventeen years. This cul-de-sac um, is a really wonderful little niche, uh, little nook in Eureka. It's a beautiful spot where kids ride bikes, where um, you know, just an open kind of wonderful area that has I think would be disrupted by folks who are coming here just for the weekend. And again, of course, we honor Lance and Tracy's desire to be able to rent it out, but a longer term residency gives us some continuity. Folks who come on the weekend are gonna be likely folks who might wanna party or have a good time, spring break folks. And we're concerned about noise, we're concerned about parking, we're concerned about the disruption. If there is trouble, my house is directly across the street from this. I'm literally the closest neighbor that lives there. I'm the most likely person who's gonna have to navigate anything that happens. And I know that there's someone in Arcata that they have on contact, but in the event of, of an emergency or someone getting lost, we've ordered pizzas and it's taken an hour and twenty minutes to get there because people can't find this little corner of Eureka. It's a wonderful spot that we're concerned that the short term rental would be damaging to. The second thing I'd like y'all to consider is, is that um, there is no parking available that's not gonna wind up on someone else's um, parking space uh, in their land. Um, you couldn't really park in the garage successfully and then spot, their driveway's very, very steep and almost always is everybody who comes to Lance and Tracy's house winds up parking in the cul-de-sac. And we share that space, that happens occasionally, but we have to acknowledge that it is someone's front yard. It's the space that they're sort of generously acknowledging that's happening. One car makes sense, but three is gonna be, I think, or two even is gonna be a, a real ask, I think, of folks. And so the norm and the practice is that everyone parks in the cul-de-sac. And the third thing, um, I want to just mention is, is that I really think that we desperately need long term housing in this community. There are two other vacation rentals in our little area here, short term vacation rentals. And you might say, what's the harm in a third one? Well, if I had known now what the sort of, what the, what it was like to have those as neighbors, I would have been at the planning commission asking you to not approve those permits. This is an unconditional into the future decision that will have impacts on generations to come. And I would just ask, there's an opportunity for someone to get a vacation rental. No consumer will be put out if you don't approve this and the neighborhood will be put out if you do approve this. So I please ask you to take into consideration the voice of the neighbors and thank you so much for listening to me today.
Thank you for your comments. Um, it looks like a J Street resident has their hand raised. If you could state your name for the record. Sorry, you're muted. If you could unmute.
There we go. I think I'm unmuted now. Um, sorry for the bad lighting and such. My name is Mike McDowell. I live across the street. Um, I'm at three five five six J Street as well. I, let me start my timer. I know I have three minutes. Um, so I am familiar with the case. I've spoken with Trace and Lance, uh, Tracy and Lance about it. Um, over the last few months. Uh, my opinions on it have varied during that time period. I think right now what I would be, what I've been interested in relaying to the planning commission is I feel that current city policy is putting too high density of these types of rentals in residential um, neighborhoods. Uh, like uh, Maxwell said prior to me, I do support Tracy and Lance being able to rent their house. Uh, I understand that aspect. Um, currently in front of my house, I have one short term Airbnb just to cross the street to the right. Tracy's and Lance will be the second one across the street just to the left. And at our corner, we have a third one. So on one side of the street, including the corner house, we have uh, one, two, three, four, five, six total houses. Um, and then three across the street, so that's seven, eight, nine. Out of nine houses, three of which would be short term Airbnbs. I think that's a little too dense in my opinion. I support more of a long term uh, approach. Um, I feel that there's a cumulative effect going on, like uh, one of the earlier planning commissioners said, this is in per- in perpetuity. So it's not like this, yeah, if there's complaints, we can voice those into the future and maybe re, uh, you know, work on getting a permit pulled. But I think we should be considering these things now at the city level beyond just even a case by case thing, but essentially we have about six houses on this street and for, you know, ha- three of which are becoming Airbnbs. I'm in the process of uh, additionally buying my house and I'm putting everything I own into this house here. And the idea of three Airbnbs surrounding me and with what I've seen now is kind of the turnover effect, it's a little tricky for me to um, kind of fully support it. Uh, again, there's parking related issues on the street. Um, I also feel that with the short term renters, we're gonna have increased speed. I do have a child, young child that's out in front of my house frequently and I've had issues with people speeding on the street. Um, again, I feel that uh, it becomes uncomfortable to walk out of your house and have strangers out in front of your house all the time. I've dealt with it across the street for months on end and it's just, it's a weird thing to open your garage and then you walk outside and there's somebody new you've never seen before and they're standing, standing there looking in your garage or at you or at your child. I mean, the whole thing can be kind of weird feeling sometimes. It's a very neighborhood feel and so to have this kind of condition starting to occur is different. Again, I, I really wanna support Tran- Tracy and Lance on their endeavors of being able to rent their home. I support more of a long term rental is what I'm realizing and that uh, this density of the high weekend turnover is not really a thing I feel like I need to have on my street that I've, I mean, my house is appraised at four hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. I have a lot going into this house that I work for and to be surrounded by vacation rentals isn't really why I chose to live on my street or buy my house. It's one of the reasons I chose not to live in the city of Arcata. Um, being that it's in per- in perpetuity and that these plans aren't revisited, I think it's an important concept that either we uh, extend public comment. I know there's other people that have mentioned that they didn't comment because they were busy. Um, so I'm not sure how the planning commission works on that thing and um, so that's kind of what I wanted to express. I feel that we have, it's too high density for another third short. Um, if it was the only one on the street, we might have, I might have a different opinion. But now it's gonna be the third one on the street, um, which kind of changes my cumulative effect.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, I think it is too.
That would be all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, I will bring it back to commissioners for discussion.
Well, you know, fellow commissioners, um, you know, for me, this is, I, I often bring up some things I'm gonna bring up tonight when it comes to vacation rentals and, and the need for, for you know, for long term uh, residential housing, um, you know, in, not only in our county, but, but in our city. And so that, you know, it just, it comes up for me again tonight. I mean, it's from the, from the perspective of a planning commissioner, you know, exempting this from SEQA is, is, is a yes. Does it fit the zoning for me? This, th- this is a yet. Staff has made, uh, you know, good arguments for that. But back to the policy on five point one, H five point one on the balance of the need for residential housing and vacation rentals, you know, this, this is an ongoing issue and I'm, and I'll note that there's, you know, per, per staff, you know, of, at, current estimate of twelve thousand eighty-nine housing units available in Eureka with one point five percent of the total housing units um, being, being vacation rentals, but, but also the vacation rentals over the last five years have, have, have a range of there being ninety-eight to a hundred and sixty-three rentals available. And today, just this afternoon, I went on zunger.com and it says that there, that the long term rentals available in Eureka as of to, just for today, and that's a moving target is fifty-nine. Rent.com said there's eleven houses available. Realtor.com said there's eight houses for rent in Eureka and Rentals.com said there's thirty-five houses. So even if we took the average of all that, around twenty, um, as a conservative estimate, there's, there's three times more vacation rentals available to people coming to Eureka than there are for, for residents. And the, and the liberal estimate would put it about ten times more vacation rentals available to the citizens of Humboldt County, um, uh, so, so to me, that's a, that, that starts to get into a, a social justice issue. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big issue um, for me and you know, currently, just in the, in the short term, um, uh, you know, we, we have, and, and Dr. Scher brought this up as well, you know, we have a need for housing and Cal Poly Humboldt, for example, has three hundred and fifty beds being for students being in the Super Eight and the Motel Six on, on Giandoli Road. So we, we have this huge need for student housing. Uh, medical professional retention is very difficult in Humboldt County. We all know that. We've heard about that a lot and it's partly due to housing. And in the midterm, we're really looking at the need for residential housing for jobs coming to this county through Nordic Aqua Farms and offshore wind farms. And so just thinking about this with a more midterm and a long, and a long term view, I, I, I just, I, it causes me to pause. Even though there's no reason why we, 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 we don't say yes to this, because like I said, it fits the zoning, it's exempt from SEQA. I don't have a great reason to say no and it, and so, so, but it puts me in a, in a quandary. You know, every time this comes up and we've said yes many times and I, and I certainly don't want um, Lance Morton and Tracy Cattlemen to be the lightning rod folks where, where we start changing how we're feeling about, about this. And we could, the same could be said on, about fast food restaurants, same thing could be said um, about cannabis dispensaries in town. I mean, wh- wh- what's enough? And that becomes a political um, decision rather than one so much around codes. But I really think it's time for Eureka City Council to impose a cap on vacation rentals so that we are not in that position of having to, to make a political decision when we're really kind of a technical um, uh, body and, or that they're, they limit the duration of conditional or, you know, minor use permits for a certain amount of time that we, that we start to make these, not in perpetuity, so that we have some ability to make adjustments as our community evolves. Um, so those are some of my, my, that's a lot, I know, but those are, those are my thoughts on this, you know, at this moment.
I think I agree with you for, and all of that. And I think that's something we struggle with for sure because how do you say no just because we're feeling like that, that is an important piece and it's not clear to us? So what's within our purview? And I certainly know what a special neighborhood that is and to know that there are gonna be three, possibly three rent, you know, some uh, short term rentals, um, right there. It does change a residential neighborhood and that is a, you know, I, I know how magical it is. That's why I, I put my roots down there. Um, but it is, I don't, you know, I, I don't know how we say no because it does fit all the, the criteria. But I agree with you. I feel strongly like something does need to be done because it has come up a few times and we've requested a few times that um, there be, you know, more clear numbers on what the vacation numbers are because there, we know that there are unpermitted vacation rentals. I know there are other unpermitted vacation rentals in our neighborhood, so yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit here too because do we take a stand and say, hey, enough is enough as a commission and then let council deal with it or, um, a- a- and unfortunately, sometimes people are kind of that lightning rod and that's just part of, of the luck of the draw, I guess. But I feel, I feel the same way with you. I see people struggling to live. I see my employees having a hard time finding places to live that. Um, and, and yeah, I, I think it's leaves it a lot to be questioned.
I was just sitting here being aggravated. Um, you two articulated it much better than my just aggravation. Um, I agree with everything the two of you said, that we are in a place where this seems to fit. Might talk about conditions, but I, and I know the city is looking at vacation rentals and I actually nerded out for a while on a city council meeting where the Director of Finance presented uh, consultant work and his own work that documented quite a bit of what is out there that is not permitted or licensed, whatever the right phrase is and what is. I don't know. I don't know yet that we're, we're being heard and the citizenry is being heard that we don't want a lot more of this. And so, you know, I uh have been a broken record on being a technical body and more of a judicial body. And Commissioner Lazar will correct me on parts of that at times, but uh I, I'm, I was s- sitting here as a likely yes vote on this project, being aggravated by the overall situation.
I guess I have a question for staff. There are a couple flavors of these and it seems like what requires the minor use permit is the the not, the lack of an onsite proprietor, is that right?
Correct.
So if this proposal were to come before the department and they had someone who's a live-in person who was gonna be there, there would be no notice to the neighborhood? It would be an administrative approval?
The notice that would be sent would be after the approval, once it would be of the emergency contact.
That's not correct.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just really, sorry, uh I just got corrected on this too. There's no emergency contact requirement. If um if it's, if the proprietor will be onsite for the duration of all rentals. So yes, it's done administratively. Um also, if in most uh commercial, a mixed use districts, um they're allowed, they're, it's not called a vacation rental, it's called commercial lodging and it's principally permitted. So in the commercial districts, any long term residents could be converted into commercial lodging um without any uh discretionary review.
But in residential zoning district.
Right, the thought was, the, I believe, when the code was, the vacation rental regulations have been changed a number, number of times. There's been a lot of thought about it. And I feel like the, the latest iteration was because people were concerned mostly with the residential districts and um the fact, and most concerned with when there's no proprietor onsite. And that's why it was done that way. But yes, a cap would not be a full cap. It would, unless we change the regulations to require discretionary approval for all. Or, yeah, we'd have to change how we define vacation rentals and we'd have to change a lot of stuff.
So I, I just, I ask that because I think that it helps provide a little bit of perspective on why we have discretion tonight over this project. We have discretion because it's not going to have an onsite caretaker. But you take away that and say they designate their friend that's gonna live there year round, then it's out of our control.
It would also change the desirability of renting it.
Really, the way that it's written right now, it has to be the proprietor of the property living there, so they couldn't designate a caretaker.
Yeah, so I guess I say that because they're not proposing that, so we have discretion. Because we have discretion, we have to decide on whether it's consistent with the general plan and the zoning. We have to consider if there's localized issues that are being identified that make this not a good fit. Whereas it might in other situations. I guess the two things that kind of went around in my head, and I don't bring these up, you know, lightly, but I do think they are ways of controlling it. And Commissioner Benson spoke to one of them. Um one is to apply a limit to the term of the permit. That is within our control to do that. It's not a requirement of the code. It's not automatic, but it is something that we could do. Um and the other is to require a a caretaker reside on the property because there'll be someone who has a, you know, a vested interest in making sure things run smoothly and can police bad behavior better than somebody who's out in Arcata. I mean, I don't know whether or not, you know, I have the appetite, much less my fellow commissioners do, but those are the two things that were kicking around in my head as to ways we could maybe soften the blow to the neighborhood.
Do Commissioner Benson, do you have a suggestion on that term?
You know, I hate to invent things on on the spot, um but you know, if I'm, I'm looking for a a way to get to yes, you know, and and finding a way of 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 how can we facilitate um the Lance Morton and Tracy Cattlemen to be able to rent their house. Even the neighbors are are in support of 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 their, of their being a rental. We've also heard their medical news, you've also heard um that they plan on using the property about, you know, a third of the year. And and then um Commissioner Lazar is talking about how it's kind of a game changer if there's a a caretaker and that we have discretion to apply a permit limit. And so to get roundabout to your question, you know, I, I, it's, it's sometimes lovely to have a chance to try something out in life. And you know, it seems like a, a giving, giving a period of of, I, I think a long enough period to really let everyone feel it out without, you know, becoming overwhelmed by it, you know, might be a one to two year period. I would put something in there and see, see how it works. See if people, where people actually park. You know, see uh how, how much the um the p- the applicants end up wanting, being able to use the property and and whether they're able to get, you know, slightly, you know, people who who are interested in renting it for a month rather than for a weekend. And it'd just be interesting to see how, how it plays out and to give every, both neighbors and owners alike a, a, a chance to, you know, to permit them to 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 see how it works, but also have some discretion for it to come back to us at a time and get and sort of, and and hear how it went. I know that's maybe not typical, but that would get me to yes on something like this. And I see staff sort of going, oh my gosh, they're creating more work for us as they speak, but.
Could you pull up those conditions for revocation of a permit?
Sure. And I just wanted to mention that our um principal planner gets uh seem to believe that we, we couldn't impose a time limit on use permits. Um our code currently says approved use permits do not expire and remain in effect indefinitely unless the city revokes the permit. Um so one thing to, you know, that I, we were considering in a code update was specifying unless uh conditions have been added or a, a time limit has been added as a condition of approval to, to make it clear that that's an allowed condition. Um just putting that out there.
It's different though to have, to have a um a permit revoked because of it in some punitive way as opposed to just a discretionary review of, that's um, you know, more open ended. How is it working for the community who lives there?
So what you're proposing is not a limited term permit, it's just a a review within a couple of years?
With, with discretionary ability to revoke it at that time if it's, if it's really created a lot of problems for both owners and and the neighborhood.
I do wonder about this. It's like VR is chronically non-compliant with the requirements. So if, say the neighbors, could we just go down this path for a minute, just that the neighbors are documenting parking issues? Parking, I can see would be the easiest one to go about. So they're chronically parking poorly. What is, what's the process with the city?
Um they, oh, would you like to answer? If um if code enforcement receives complaints, those would be documented.
What's chronic?
There is no definition of chronic in our, in our code.
Okay. It's a lot of ambiguity there. So I'm just wondering, because I know that the city is, is good at working through issues, right? You want these things to continue. So my fear is for these neighbors that are gonna start sending you this documentation. And then what's the end result? I mean, if they're parking non-compliantly, that should be pretty evident, right, by photographic evidence? Um and so I'm just wondering then, what, what are the steps the city is gonna take to to remedy that?
I'm trying to find the revocation section. Do you guys know where it is off the bat?
I'll let staff correct me, but from my experience as a planner professionally, revocation is a highly onerous process and it's subject to all the all the privileges of any due process, meaning that even a decision we make on it, should we choose to revoke it, it could be appealed to the city council. And uh it often doesn't end up in revocation, from my experience, it ends up with some compromise, but.
And I, I would say that was my concern too, and knowing that chronically is ambiguous or they don't have a definition for that. So it just leaves a lot for there just to be a ton of frustration. Here, I can read, I can read the section. Any discretionary permit may be revoked as provided in section. Review authority, a permit may be revoked by the review authority that originally approved the permit. In instances where the director was the original review authority, the director may refer in action to revoke a permit to the planning commission. Um property owner notification, uh public notice and hearing, findings. The review authority may revoke a permit oh, only if one or more of the following findings can be made. The applicant or property owner has altered the circumstances under which the permit was granted. And there's all this stuff, including not complying with the conditions of approval. Appeals, a decision to revoke a permit by any other review authority may be appealed to the city council. A decision of the city council to revoke a permit is final. Um effects of revocation, the revocation of a permit has the effect of terminating the approval and denying the privileges granted by the permit. Um and the prior holder of the revoked permit may not apply for a new permit for the same or substantially similar use on the property within one year of the permit revocation. Thanks for looking that up.
So I was surprised to hear that we don't have the ability to apply a term limit to a use permit. That really was uh not something I have ever encountered, but you're, that's our current interpretation of the code, huh?
I mean, it's up to you all to interpret the code, but that was um, it, it states pretty certainly that use permits run with the land unless revoked.
Right, that's a common principle, but, but it could run with the land, subject to their term. You know, if it's a five-year term and this property sells at year two, you know, it ran with the land. But at three years after that, it's goes poof, you know, uh it's just, it's such a fundamental part of planning, you know, controls, you know, zoning controls.
I plan to do research on this question.
Well, i- if we are to interpret the code for the time being as not being, permitting us the ability to uh prescribe a term limit, I think the next opportunity for controlling or at least reviewing it in a more uh informal fashion, although it has the same practical effect, it would be a hearing before us, is to build a condition saying that there has to be a review of the permit at a public hearing of the planning commission at a certain interval following its approval. And at that point, we can lay the breadcrumbs for the findings that if we find that the thing doesn't comply with the conditions to our satisfaction, we can modify the conditions or or revoke the permit, you know, and just kind of shortcut to that, you know. But make it a formalized, it's gonna happen two years, a year, six months, whatever, following the approval. So that it'll be a unlimited permit until it's limited by our revocation and it, once we go through that review process. So we could, we could still apply a condition that triggers that. Does that sound fair?
My question was, um how are we gonna pay for the noticing, for the public hearing, for the review?
Why wouldn't it be the applicant's responsibility?
I don't think we have a hook right now to require them to pay. So like right now, you pay for your use permit and your fee includes the, the mailing. It's like five hundred dollars to usually mail not notices to everyone. Um I think in the permit revocation, it's kind of wrapped in, so the city knows that we're gonna have to pay for the public hearing. But I was just curious if we were to come back.
Why don't we just, we could just come back without a pub, without a notice?
Although it would be good. I think an important part of it is notifying the neighborhood to solicit input. We don't wanna just hear from the applicant. I, I mean, we can't write a condition to say that the applicant's responsible for paying for the noticing costs, I mean, in the conditions, yeah. Yeah, it, it sounds like we need to do that if we do apply the condition, but it seems feasible.
Can we exempt a, the cost of, of the, of the um application since one has already been given? Is that something that we're, also have authority to do, that you pay once and not twice? We, we, we're asking hard questions tonight. Appreciate you, you pondering on it.
I mean, there is no real application fee for this because it's a, a different thing. It's not in the fee schedule. So it's whatever we, we say they have to do. Yeah, I think we can just say they have to pay the noticing fee.
Common language in permits in the county is that you pay on a time and materials basis for the work reviewing your application or your monitoring report or whatever it might be.
We do have that in our fee schedule. It's a, you pay a, a down payment of something like eighty dollars and then we charge for whatever it costs us.
So does that sound like we could, you know, utilize that? So I guess the question really is just whether we feel like that's an appropriate way to kind of give us another chance to review and see how this is really looking if you, in the future.
I'm interested in, in trying it out and and having it be non-punitive. But I also don't wanna set up a situation where the neighbors are, are spending all their time looking for reasons to make an argument a- a- against. I don't wanna create uh Hatfields and the Coys in the neighborhood because we make a decision to re-review in, in, in two years. Um and so that, so the folks are gathering evidence, but it seems that there's some, there's some good um you know, camaraderie in that neighborhood and that, and that it might not go, go in that direction. And people might really be reasonable and and conciliatory and and want uh to have an of opportunity to look at it at, at a later time. Um I'd, I'd be supportive of, of that kind of approach, not just because of this particular um application in front of us, but, but just um because this has come up before. And the, and this might be an alternative, not become a regular thing. I think it, it, it shouldn't be a regular thing. But um where we have alternatives as a planning commission to have another opportunity for review um at a later time. My, one of my concerns, however, is that we are o- overburdened staff. Um and who's to know which one, how many of us are still gonna be here in, in two years? Um you know, we, we can't look in the crystal ball and and know that. And then someone has to start the story from the beginning. And so, so there's a few concerns I have about that approach at the same time.
Guess I don't have any concerns about whether or not any or all of us are here. I, I think it, it's the responsibility of the commission to be a quasi-judicial body when it comes to things like this. And so that's part of the skill set we all bring and try to be reasonable. I do, I do have some concerns, not about this application, just about the, the kind of way that our paradigm's set up for permitting these that if you are one flavor, the onsite caretaker flavor, no one's ever gonna hear about it. It's just gonna continue to accumulate. There's no cap and maybe we'll hit a tipping point, but it won't be until after we've hit it. For neighborhoods, for circumstances where you do trigger discretion and there is notification and the neighborhood is engaged, like we've seen how that can work tonight, we start to get the feedback on, maybe we are approaching tipping points in local areas in these sort of re, you know, subregions of the city. And I think that is an appropriate juncture to really take seriously. I don't see it as unfair to the applicant, whoever that might be, at that point in time because they're the one that was the last to the party, you know? And maybe the bandwidth for how many of these a neighborhood can support has been soaked up by the time they show up. And then I think it's appropriate for us to weigh that. It's not an ideal way to do this, though. It really is better to do that maybe proactively, not at the permit level, but in a more comprehensive fashion. And I don't see the regulatory structure set up to do that. So that's a little bit concerning, but it's not really part of what we have for us tonight. I think what we have for us tonight is the sort of reactive scenario where we have a certain amount that's already emerged. We have a new one on the horizon. We have some heartburn amongst the people that live there. And we have some opportunities to try to see if it's as bad as everyone's fears are. And if it isn't, maybe we'll, then whoever's sitting here in a year or whatever the increment we come up with, won't have a problem, you know, relieving it of further scrutiny and maybe removing that monitoring component. But if it is, if the fears were realized, we'll find out and then we can see what we can do about it. So yeah, I'm prepared to, to make a condition suggestion or language if, if, if there's interest.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very interested in hearing it. I, I feel that I, I, I've had to, I've made it, I've been puzzling around a decision while seeing neighbors come up. I'm, I'm finding that I know everybody in this. I'm, I'm finding that I know everybody in this petition and I'm, and I'm going, and I, you know, I've worked with Tracy Cattlemen. Um, when she was with Forest Stewardship Council, I asked Mike McDowell to come and speak to my classes. Um, I'm, I'm a colleague of Dr. Schur, and I didn't know all these people were the neighbors. But as the evening has gone on, it, it seems that the only responsible thing for me to do is, is take an abstention vote. But that doesn't stop me from wanting to hear, you know, being interested in, in, in hearing a, a modified motion.
Well, I, I wonder about the abstention too, because I, I have an interest, although honestly, like, I haven't seen issues with the other two that are in my neighborhood and I'm not too sure i- if there's a real issue. Um, I, I, I do feel I'm sensitive to the emotion that's here because like I said, it's, it's a, it's a cool spot and it does have a lot of privacy. And so I could see if I lived directly across the street and, um, I think it was Maxwell that stated, you know, he's opening the door and he's seeing strangers all the time. And it is, e- especially in that neighborhood, because you don't have a lot of walking, um, people walking through. It, it would be a little bit of push on your, on your privacy. So I am feeling a little torn as well about just, and I've thought about the abstention part and, um, but then I look, you know, I think staffers leave this out and I think sometimes it pushes us to where our hands are tied and we can't make decisions based on our emotion or how we're feeling personally. But they've kind of laid it out in a way that almost gives us no opportunity but then to push forward. But this has come up before and I think maybe it's time for us as a commission to hold staff and city councils feet to the fire about this. Um, and figure out what the right answer is for these vacation rentals. Um, because it does seem to be coming up more and more and, um, it is emotional. These are these people's homes. It's what people spent all of their money and their time on is, is that sanctuary in that space that they have that they call home. And so when they feel it's being infiltrated, um, it is upsetting. So I get that part, but also we have a job to do and that is to make sure that it, it fits. And, and in this case, it does fit. And in every case we've come across, it does fit. And it seems like there's always this issue with the neighbor. So, and, and we need tourism and so there's all those parts too. So I, I do feel really torn, but, um, I like the idea of an opportunity to revisit it any year because I think even if they spend their time keeping track of uh, issues with the conditions and people parking poorly, um, I think it's going to be a struggle for them to get it revoked. And, um, will continue to cause concern in the neighborhood.
It seems a year, uh, the time of a year is enough time to gather some history and see trends, but it's, it's not so long that a course correction can't be made.
Well, I'd be of the thought, we look at this in six months after the high season and look at it, you know, right after the high season to see what the issues have been. Um, and it might be a good marker for some of the other, um, vacation rentals that have come across our agenda.
Yeah, I guess, uh, six months is fine. I, it seems a little quick, but I know it'll be an eternity if it's a nightmare for the neighborhood. So, um, yeah, I'm fine with whatever increment. I, I don't think anything less than six months would be appropriate, that'd be too short. Maybe six months within, from the date they initiate operation though, because they may spend a month getting the building permit stuff sorted or, you know, whatever, business license, I'm not sure. There'll be a two-week appeal period probably, yeah, so just have it start from when they first rent it. And, and, and maybe a tickler would have to be made for staff, I think, to, to get them to come in. So.
Can I interrupt for a sec?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm looking at the planning commission's bylaws and it says, "No commissioner who owns property within 500 feet of any case before the planning commission shall participate." I love when there are rules that just make it a lot easier for me. So that propose, uh, poses quite a problem with us, I think, for a quorum, right? If you have two abstaining for a vote.
Um, there's five commissioners, so quorum's three of five. I just saw it in the bylaws.
So if he abstains and then I can't, if he.
Then there's not enough, yeah, correct.
We need Commissioner Freitas. Um, yeah, I apologize for coming to that slowly. Usually I look at stuff in advance and decide whether I have, need to recuse myself, but, but this sort of, this sort of.
I understand it, yeah. It was not an obvious thing.
Well, maybe there's a silver lining to this, because we've got so many questions out here. We don't have a quorum if we have two people that feel the need to recuse themselves. I mean, in the case of Commissioner Meyer, it's pretty clear. Uh, in the case of Commissioner Benson, certainly a responsible and respectful thing to do. So, you know, it, there may be some things that get sorted through if this comes back to us in a month. Uh, because it's a messy situation. Uh, and I, and I feel for these applicants. Uh, I also, I have a few other reflections. One is, you know, when I think about Eureka and the amount of vacation rentals that the consultant has been able to find that are being promoted, that aren't permitted and the ones that are. I'm, I'm not offended overall at the number, but, uh, if I lived in this neighborhood, I would probably feel like these neighbors feel that, you know, three out of nine is a lot. It's getting a little closer to Trinidad and the kind of issues that they have. So I, I would hope that if we have a month that staff would communicate up the chain, that this is continuing to pinch. It's way more emotional than cannabis. It's, you know, that's, in my year and a half on the planning commission, these are the hardest things that have come to us. Our, you know, well-meaning proposals for rentals with well-meaning neighbors who have concerns and, um, not great policy, uh, in my view to, for us to be able to implement. So I, I do see a silver lining to giving this a month, maybe both of the city side and the applicant with his, with their neighbors, uh, could make some progress.
I would very much like to hear Commissioner Lazar's proposed condition so that, so that staff has something to chew on over the month. So we don't come back here and land, land here in a month and be having the same conversations.
I guess I'd just ask staff, I hate to do this, but since we don't technically have a quorum at this juncture, is it appropriate to do more deliberation on this item?
I feel like we should just continue it at this point to the next regularly scheduled hearing. Um, I don't feel comfortable with more discussion.
Would it be appropriate for Commissioner Lazar to email his thoughts to staff?
I think it'd be better for me to say it right now, but I don't think we technically have a valid.
I think you just blurt it out and then it'll be said and we can move forward. Commissioner Lazar can email us, uh, as long as he doesn't CC all of you, that's, that.
There you go, yeah, okay, yeah.
Do we have to make a motion to continue? I guess I can do that, I'll make a motion to continue this item. Oh, I can't do it, never mind, I'm moving on.
That motion.
Second that motion.
The, the motion needs to be to date specific, so we don't have to renotice it again.
To June's meeting.
Yeah, to the regularly scheduled meeting next month. And, um, Commissioner Benson, you'll have to vote on the continuation.
Yeah, I don't feel a conflict of interest in, in talking about, allowing this to be talked about again.
Did they vote?
I don't think so.
I think you can call for us to vote.
Oh, yeah, you go ahead and vote. I was just staying mute over here. You want to roll call vote?
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you for that. So we will, uh, close the new public hearings at this time. It looks like we have no old business and we have some new business. Sunny Avenue Acquisition Number Two.
This is Senior Planner Caitlin Castellano, let me share my screen.
Put myself on, all right. Good evening, commissioners. Uh, here we are again for another property acquisition number two on Sunny Avenue. So the property is located in the northeast portion of the city, south of Highway 101. Zooming in, we see that it is located south of Myrtle Avenue. It's east of Sunny Avenue. It's approximately 2.1 acres and most of the site is low-lying land mapped as wetlands uh, by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service National Wetlands Inventory. And then a small portion, 0.4 acre, well, that's not really that small, but compared to the overall size of the property. Uh, on the west side of the property is higher in elevation, approximately 12 to 20 feet, uh, and may include uplands. Directly to the north is the Link Housing Project Site at Sunny and Myrtle Avenue. And directly south is 1429 Sunny Avenue, which the city recently purchased to use for the Beta Zoo Trail. The city does intend to use this property as trail mitigation as needed or the upland site could be used for other city facilities. Here's a street view. Uh, looking south from Sunny Avenue, just, I'm sorry, just south of Myrtle Avenue. And the orange is the approximate area of the property. And you see on the left, there's the white vehicle and the mower, and that is the Link Housing Sunny and Myrtle Site. So Eureka Municipal Code, Chapter 152, and the California Government Code, Section 65402 requires the planning commission to make a determination as to whether the proposed property acquisition conforms with, oops, excuse me, the City Eureka 2040 General Plan. Your staff report discusses its conformance and also discusses how the action is exempt from SEQA. So we do recommend that you receive the report and adopt a resolution finding the acquisition of the City of Eureka of APN 006181011 on Sunny Avenue is exempt from SEQA and conforms with the City Eureka's 2040 General Plan. Also, I did want to point out, um, that we did realize after we published the staff report that maybe no project would be done on this site and it could just be, uh, preserved and conserved since it is, majority of it is in the green gulchway. So we can stop screen sharing and we do have a motion when you're ready.
Thank you for your presentation. Bring it to the commissioners for questions for staff.
I read in your report, um, Planner Castellano, that, that this will be adjacent to the Beta Zoo Trail. So it means that the, the property line will share a, a border of the Beta Zoo Trail? Or will the Beta Zoo Trail go through this property?
The Beta Zoo Trail does not go through the property, but it shares a border, the property shares a border.
Thank you.
I'm assuming there was no, uh, input from the public received prior to this, no letters?
Um, it didn't require a public hearing, but no one saw the agenda and contacted us, so.
Any other questions here?
I guess I, I was just wondering, so it seemed unclear what the future of the property would be, like.
Yes, so Miles said the, he, he would like to use it for mitigation as needed. Um, the upland area, it's so small, maybe, maybe some city sewer or water facilities. That he doesn't really know, but the opportunity to purchase it came up. And for the fact that it is adjacent to the Beta Zoo Trail, it can be used for mitigation. And then as I said before, that we thought of after was maybe no project happens on it and it's just preserved and, and conserved as open space.
But we're being asked to make a determination that acquiring the property for the, the City of Eureka's acquisition is consistent with the general plan.
Correct, and the general plan does have policies in there for preserving the greenways and gulches and open spaces. And so, um, part of even the wetland mitig, mitigation, I believe those policies for that would work for the instance where if there was no project either. Or the project would be conservation.
Uh, this isn't a question, it's, it's more a comment on this. So yeah, I understand that we're, that we're being asked to, um, to make a decision or determination whether the acquisition of the property, um, is SEQA exempt and whether it fits the general plan. Um, and again, this, you know, as a single action, for, for me, this is completely SEQA exempt. It, it does fit much of, most of the general plan. To me, here, here's my concern with this is, is that the acquisition of this property, per the report, is intended to support the Beta Zoo Trail, um, which does have impacts to, you know, 86 landowners and 170 parcels. Um, and, and it might provide offsite mitigation for, for trail wetland impact. So I, so I'm kind of starting to get this concern that, you know, this is the second property. Um, I, I will be transparent to say I had ex parte communication with, uh, Miles Lattery and Natalie Arroyo um, along the, um, uh, the ape of, of the, of the Beta Zoo Trail. And, um, and, and some, one of the things discussed was the, the city acquiring even more properties along um, the area of potential ef, uh, effect or the ape of the Beta Zoo Trail. And so, so, so I'm, I'm starting to worry that, that there's going to be piecemeal. We're, we're going to be doing this in lots of, in lots of small increments of, of saying, yes, this is SEQA exempt. But, but the concern is that it's becoming this piecemeal city acquisition of adjacent properties really represents a scope creep or project expansion to the original, um, you know, Beta Zoo Trail initial study and make mitigated negative declaration. And that new properties, you know, increase the, the, the Beta Zoo Trail area of potential effect because they're, they're immediately adjacent and may be used, may be used for mitigation, may be used as laydown areas for the, for construction or, or, or might not. Um, so I would be more supportive of a resolution that affirms the acquisition of the property is SEQA exempt. But somehow I'm, I'm starting, I would like to see that the city, some language in there, the city will, will, once they've bought all the properties that are going to buy, and, and there's going to be more. I've been, I've been, I've been told that is a strategy. Um, I would like to see the Beta Zoo Trail, once all the attendant property acquisition happens and the train, and the trail alignment is finalized, that there, that we may want to suggest whether there, at least an evaluation of whether supplementary SEQA analysis is needed once the project gets bigger by, you know, through the, through the planning process and through these property acquisitions. So that's what I, that's what I have on, on that, is just the, the worry about the, the project is becoming bigger than what was SEQA certified, um, by this commission in the past. I know we thought this was going to be easy, huh?
I thank you for your, you're throwing us on it. It's nice to have that kind of forethought looking forward and, and what it might mean.
I feel like, um, when we took up the Beta Zoo Trail environmental document, I, I found it a very frustrating exercise because there was a lack of precision to the project. That there was going to be an opportunity for instability and future evolution that wouldn't really be given much consideration. And, and the way I see it is the books closed on the environmental review associated with that project because we closed it well in advance of a lot of these details emerging. We had a universe of impact and I don't think this is outside of the universe in my opinion. But at that time, someone could have raised that issue that there's a lack of, uh, you know, details that really beg further scrutiny and consideration. But, you know, that's done, you know? And so to me, I don't have a lot of heartburn about the scope creep per se, but I do, I did have heartburn when we adopted that environmental document to try to make us more competitive for the funding source. So, so yeah, there could be a change in the design or something that might bring it back before us, but this to me doesn't warrant that, and I don't have any great concerns about it. That's just my feeling about it.
Do you have questions for staff, anyone else? Otherwise we'll move through the process here to bring it back. No, uh, we'll open a public hearing. Nobody. I don't see anybody either, just wanted to give it a minute. Nobody. I don't see anybody either. Just wanted to give it a minute, a beat. And we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to discussion.
I guess I'm comfortable making the staff's recommended motion if there's no further discussion here.
Sure. Do you want her to pull it up for you?
Please. Was that a swear? Oh, sure. Okay. I heard something else. All right. I move the planning commission to adopt a resolution finding the acquisition of APN 00618100011 on Sunny Avenue is exempt from SEQA and conforms with the city's 2040 General Plan and direct staff to report the commission's determination and any comments to the city council.
I'll second. Any discussion? You guys ready to vote? All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, that closes new business. And it looks like unless there's any surprise information on this agenda, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, oh, you missed the director report and communication.
Oh, there wasn't anything listed there. So I skipped it, but we, let's go back to it.
Yeah, I have a general report. Let's do it. So Principal Planner Getz has retired and I am, have been promoted to Director of Development Services. Thank you.
Congratulations.
As of Tuesday of last week, so.
Should she even say goodbye to us?
She just failed. Well, yeah. Also, we council did their strategic visioning workshop this past Friday and Saturday. So we should be seeing a new strategic vision from the council pretty soon. I also wanted to mention that the RFPs are out. There's one for our housing on city lots, trying to get affordable developers to develop on city lots. So the first one is for Fifth and D and Sixth and L. And the deadline for application is June 8th. And then the selection is supposed to occur at the city council meeting on July 18th. And the second one is for the waterfront parcels between CNF Street. And the deadline for applications is August 8th. And the city council will be reviewing those applications on September 5th. And then our department is working on a survey of all the applicants that have gone through the development process in the past two years. It's one of the implementation measures of our housing element to see what we can do to improve our processes. So I hope to bring an update on that to you soon. And now I'm going to just turn it over to Caitlin to quickly give you an update on the Waterfront Eureka Plan.
Yes, so we've been working hard with trying to do all the final copy edits of the draft plan. I should have that this week. It'll be up on our website, thewaterfronteureka.com soon. There'll be a function, a comment function within the website where you can comment on specific sections of the web. I also do intend on bringing it forward to you guys with a more of a presentation, more detailed, probably June, July, maybe. They're still working on the SEQA streamlining plant portion of the plan, which would entail a work plan for projects that are consistent with the plan, how to streamline, get them through SEQA. Because as we know, a lot of the large vacant lots within the plan area are right next to the water or there were hazardous waste sites. So they will have to go through some sort of SEQA. So helping to kind of point out what those potential roadblocks would be and have a path forward or like, so people will have an expectation when developing down there, what kind of sequel they'll have to do. They, and then after in June or July, when we do that presentation, there'll be more public comment. Then we'll come back for the public hearings on the actual plan. So I'm hoping when I do bring it to you next with a mini presentation, I can get your feedback for anything that may need to be updated before we bring it back for a public hearing. And I just wanted to touch also that the Transportation Commission is meeting tomorrow at 3:30. And on the agenda was a couple of projects to implement the downtown parking study. So I know the parking was a big issue. Four of the lots in Old Town are going from free to being paid. Some of the two-hour, four-hour parking schedules are getting changed. They're increasing the fees in the paid parking lots. And they're also doing a pilot program for the employees down there, where they're going to get free parking passes so they can park in the lots and track that. So the staff report, there's a lot.
Just to clarify, those will be recommendations from, and then after it goes to that committee, it goes to the city council.
Correct. So that's my update.
Thank you. That's it. That's it? We're done? Okay, adjournment.